So our first order of business is the A and R parcel 15-035 on Thresher Road.
Hi. Al?
Oh, yes.
Come on down.
Didn't know you were that prompt here. Oh, yes. We're always on time unless I'm late. Most times.
Can you share that?
Yes, I can share.
I'll put it in. My.
I've got an extra copy if someone would be sure. No, we're good. We can share. Thank you.
Okay, so can you remind me what we're doing?
Yes, this was a, it's a parcel of land on Thresher Road that is right now just a single parcel. And we're dividing it into four separate parcels.
Okay.
Where's the fourth?
A, B, C, D.
Yes. A, B, C, D, and D, those are the new four parcels. I was actually in here a year ago about, guessing, on this same A and R plan. But at that time, there's, there are two lots with substandard frontage. And at that time, those building lots didn't have a label on it saying not a building lot at this time. So the board didn't, board didn't sign off on it.
Yeah.
Now we, we, each, each of the non-standard frontage lots are labeled as not a building lot.
Got it.
But they meet the requirements for substandard?
Yes.
Building lots?
Yes.
Or substandard frontage, whatever you call it, however we define that.
Yes, the smaller lot has 60 feet of front, 60.09 and 60 feet is required.
Yep.
And each of them are over 11 acres, so that meets the requirements.
Eight or something, I forget what we have, but it's eight.
Eight.
Eight acres, right? That may be not that bad.
Which one's elegant, our robbery?
It's confusing, I know, it's confusing when you look at it. Oh. Do you want to look at the A and R? This is actually, this was a little even more confusing. So these are, and I like to look at it from the street, actually. I don't know how you like to look at it. But these are, these are the lot A, B, C, and D. These two lots have 200 feet of frontage. And this lot has a, this is an estate lot. At the building line, it's got 75. And this is an estate lot at the building line.
So then I, my question was the eight acres.
Oh, here's, this one has, this one has 11.95 acres, which exceeds the eight acre requirement. And this one has 11.13 acres.
So if we're in a state lot, they have to have eight acres.
Right, but, but lot eight, lot A then, which doesn't have.
But that has, that has sufficient frontage.
And that has sufficient square footage just to be a regular in, in that R 60.
Okay.
Is this R4 or R6?
R6.
There's only maps in your folders, R6.
R6, okay, so it needs 200 for the frontage. But the lot B only has 199.74.
Oh, you're gonna, you're on a radius.
Oh, I'm sorry, on the radius, so it has this, okay. We got the 200 there, get it, okay. Got it, okay.
Actually, there's, there's another section to the 199. If you look on, on the left corner, there's an additional 20.93 feet.
20.9. And then there's that little nick, okay, got it, okay. Thank you, yeah, yeah, okay.
That's good.
Seven. Okay.
Just checking now.
Oh, certainly.
Standards, that's all. Substandard lots, like they, they mean.
Yeah, let's see if that book might go right.
I never noticed the, I never noticed the no more than two lots created within 320 feet. Not that it applies here, but I never noticed that. So no more than two substandard, doesn't apply to this, but no more than two substandard frontage lots created within any 320 feet of frontage.
Any frontage on anywhere.
Nope, never noticed it.
Wait, where is that?
Yeah, I noticed it today. It's at the bottom of page 68.
Are you gonna hear the planning board?
Yes.
Planning board?
Can you sign up here?
Oh, here it is.
So here it is.
Okay, so 320 feet of frontage can't be split into more than two substandard lots. Not, like you said, not applicable here.
The other ones are six. Seven. Thirty. Ten, two. Let's see, any issues?
You need to. Questions, concerns?
I'd make a motion that we endorse the A and R plan dated September 9th, 2022 for subdivision approval not required, Plan Thresher Road, and Rock Mountain.
I second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair, can I ask a question?
Sure.
This is Ted Zieber, Conservation Commission. I don't have the plans, but I assume this is an HESP area. Did you get it cleared?
Yes. We actually.
You have approved?
We actually, it, it didn't look like the right soils to us for turtles. So we actually hired a, an engineer to walk the land for hundreds of hours and at a cost of $40,000, and they never found any turtles. So NHESP allowing us to build on that property without any restrictions.
Okay, and one other quick question, if you don't mind. Is this the same property?
Can you hold on? So this is approval not required. I think you're a little ahead of yourself because we haven't gotten into the public hearing yet.
Okay.
So we're just splitting, we're just splitting the land right now, Ted.
Okay.
Just, it's just dividing the land, not the actual special permit? Not the actual special permit.
All right.
That will come up momentarily.
Yes. Do you want to go continue?
No, I just want to do the last line. When you start, when you're done reading, another line has to be in. So did we close the regular meeting?
Got you. Oh, yeah.
We have to close.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, so.
We have to close the regular meeting.
Did you want to approve the minutes before we close it?
Do the minutes next time.
Minutes? I think we all reviewed them.
Yeah.
Did anyone have comments on the minutes?
Yeah, I had one comment, but I gotta find them first.
Yeah, let's, let's see the minutes before the closing, because you need to go back into it.
Yeah. There is my name here. All right, so we don't need this. Okay, I, on May 10th, the most recent one, we had a comment. Under order of business, paragraph one.
I think, hold on one.
Are you listening? Yeah, 510.
Okay.
Yep, 510. I, the last sentence there is Heather Beatty seconded, seconded the motion. But I don't see where anyone made a first motion, and I don't think there was a motion needed on that. So I think that was.
510, say that again, I'm sorry.
Number one, parag, an order of business, paragraph one, parcel 23 dash 033 dash 01. Yeah. Okay. Oh, and I, and I had a question on paragraph two of that particular one, too. I thought, and this was, and I wasn't voting on that. I recuse myself, so do you want to hear my, my thought is on that or no? Probably not.
Which one?
Darn Dino. I recuse myself, so, okay. All right, then I'll just.
No label. You weren't involved.
Okay. Are we missing who made the motion?
I don't think there was a motion.
Oh, does Jason Burso?
On paragraph one, there was no motion.
Okay, but the second one.
The second one, I can't comment on. I made the motion.
All right, so I just, I'm saying Christina made the motion.
No, it's her. Christina made a motion to approve the, I said.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's just like a long motion.
Just the made motions, three seconds.
Yeah.
I move we approve the regular meeting minutes for May 10th, 2023.
Second.
With the noted provision.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't have anything on any of the others.
Do them all in one motion?
I just had a couple editorials, so March 8th, that's in the batch, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
So the, on the first page, there's 630, Luke Mitchell.
Yep.
The sentence says Luke Mitchell and Deputy Project Manager Julia presented their proposal, identified attendance with their proposal, I would add, maybe, which included tenants at meetings, by up to, just to make that more clear.
Yep, I'm trying to.
Say that again, please.
So that sentence, I would modify that to say presented their proposal, which included attendance at meetings, not. Diane. So we need a motion to adopt that, March 8th meeting, we're going to do these.
If we don't, if nobody has any comments on the other ones, I say we do them all as one motion. With them, with them.
We could do all the comments and then do it all as one motion.
All right, my next, the March 22nd meeting, the second, this is more a question on the second page at the bottom. Where it says, it's the board's understanding that the town and it says, I assume the conditions of this grant are similar. I do not understand, that's, that's.
That's first person, I noticed that, too. I highlighted that.
That's because I took Jason's proposal to the Board of Selecting instead of doing minutes.
Yep.
I just put it in here.
Okay.
You want to change it? I can't.
Anybody opposed to us doing we assume?
No.
I'm fine, that's a good idea.
Can you tell me the K D now?
Second page.
Actually, it's page. Yep.
Paragraph. Page two, last paragraph.
Second sentence at the very right says I assume.
Well, then are you gonna change I?
Oh, yeah.
It's gonna be through the whole document.
Yeah, through the whole paragraph.
It would be after the link.
Who would write in first person?
You do.
Because she wasn't here.
I know, but I should have written in E, not I.
Will you want me to just put the whole thing, scan the whole thing and put it away?
Uh, if you don't mind, yeah. Yeah, I should have written it that way. I should not have written I.
No, you're the only one on the office.
Do you want to change that one?
Yeah.
29th, April 12th. All right, any other comments?
Nope.
I thought they were really good shape. All right, so we already approved May 10th, right?
Yes.
I move that we approve the regular meeting minutes for March 8th, March 22nd, March 29th, and April 12th, with the noted changes to March 8th and March 22nd.
Section motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Need a, should I close the regular meeting or?
I'm, I move that we close the regular meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
W and R.
Yep.
I took these of the soldiers. I gotta go get some of the art. Might be cool, though.
Fancy.
This is on this.
Yeah.
Yeah, you got a sentence.
About the A and R.
Right. Mine's right here.
Yeah. Okay. Ready?
Yep.
All right, we're gonna open the public hearing, June 14th, 2023, case 2023B. So introduction of the planning board members, Madison Pixley, Chair, Jason Berusso, Heather Beatty, Christina Brodeur, Pat Coin, and Joanne Fjor, Planning Coordinator. Statement of authority, the planning board is established under Chapter 40A of the General Laws of Massachusetts and acts in compliance with 40, with Chapter 40A under the zoning bylaws of the Town of Hampden. Chapter 41 governing the submission and approval of plots and proposed subdivisions and the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land in Hampden, Massachusetts. Legal bonus, Hampden Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, June 14th, 2023 at 6:15 PM in the Townhouse, 625 Main Street, Hampden, Mass. On the application of Bedrock Financial LLC as trustee Cumberland Blues Realty Trust for special permit approval for substandard frontage lots for parcels 15-035 dash zero Lot C and 15-035 dash zero Lot V, Lot D, under Section 7.24 of the Hampden zoning bylaw and special permit approval for a common driveway under Section 7.542 of the Hampden zoning bylaw to access parcel 15-035 dash zero Lot A, parcel 15-035 dash zero Lot B, parcel 15-035 dash zero Lot C, and parcel 15-035 dash zero Lot E. All parcels are located on Thresher Road and owned by Bedrock Financial LLC. Information related to this application is on file in the town clerk's office and is available for review by the public during normal business hours. For the board, Madison Pixley, Chair of Hamp, of the Hampden Planning Board, published in the Wolverhamm Hampden Times on May 25th and June 1st, 2023. The reports received from other town departments, agencies. The town clerk reported there are no outstanding taxes to date. The highway superintendent, Mark Langone, stated there are no stormwater or erosion control measures shown on plans. He does not feel the four-foot shoulders of mulch, private drives, or stone common drive will be sufficient. He also asked if there will be any type of crown in the common or private drives. There is not one shown in the driveway cross-section. His concern is the drives will act as a main corridor for erosion, stormwater to the country drainage ditch on Thresher Road. The current drainage system and road itself will not be able to sustain additional runoff. He suggests a series of catch basins, especially at the intersection where the common driveway splits, piled to a retention detention pond to the south of the common driveway at Thresher Road. Also, he recommends a third-party peer review as it relates to the town's stormwater bylaws, runoff, and erosion impacts, et cetera. He also requests. Okay, am I right? The building inspector raised the following points, will there be a driveway maintenance agreement between all the residents? Where will all the water go from all the new impervious surfaces drainage issue? Verify with the fire chief regarding a 50-foot radius on the driveway, and is it adequate? Are the turnarounds at the residence end of the driveway satisfactory? If there is a disagreement over plowing or maintenance, how would it be resolved as a town can't be expected to intervene? He has a concern regarding the traffic that would accompany four houses. Headlights would shine directly down onto 107 Thresher's, the Fletcher's residence. This light wash would definitely affect the Fletchers as adding all the traffic of the four residences would result in four times the destruction light-wise. Section 7.543DA states, other standards may be set based on site configurations. He feels something to mitigate, the headlight issue might be in order. The fire chief, Ed Poole, and provided the following comments, with one access to four homes and one lane vehicle, vehicle traffic will make any emergency call difficult to manage. The amount of area needed for fire apparatus would block egress access for the other dwellings in the event of an emergency. During a weather event, who's responsible for all four dwellings and main access driveway? Ward of health reports no issue. Police chief Scott B. Trumbly reports he has no concerns. The Conservation Commission would like applicant to contact their department as the entire property falls within NHESP. National Heritage Endangered Species. So if anybody has questions during the public hearing, we ask that you identify it yourself, and now the applicant can present.
Well, we, on these four lots, we designed the driveways based on what's required in the, in the regulations.
In the common drive regulation?
Yes.
Seventy-three is the common drive.
All right.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, sorry.
I mean, I mean, there's nothing, there's nothing in there on headlights on a car. The, the regulations allow for a, a common driveway for up to four lots. And that's, that's what this is. There's nothing in the regulations about headlights. If there's four houses on a common driveway, there's obviously headlights on each of those cars. It's like if you're gonna do a subdivision and you've got a street, I've, I've put in subdivisions and there's up to 20 lots in a subdivision, and they all come out onto a street, and all of those headlights will focus on any, even one house, and they do. It's kind of, kind of common. It's kinda, kinda common.
So a common driveway has to be 14.
But I think this, doesn't this fall under the FROSD? Because it's a common driveway to provide access to up to four adjoining lots as part of a...
No, because if you read the definition of Frosty, it's the lots are not subdivided into cluster.
Gotcha. As a cluster to protect.
Open space.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so how should we approach this? Should we... Because there's a lot of comments here.
Yeah. I was gonna, I was thinking if we have questions, ask questions and we'll just go through each other's concerns.
Yeah, okay.
Well, my first concern is the stormwater. So did you present this at all for stormwater erosion control approval? Did you look at it in that respect? Do you have anything on any of your maps with that respect?
We have, what we proposed was, in meeting the regulations, they asked for a 2% pitch on the first 20 feet of the driveway. And we show that on the plan. We can, we can, there's also a 2% cross pitch on the entire plan. And we show a four-foot buffer area on each side of the driveway with erosion control.
Okay. And for some reason, our highway superintendent doesn't feel that that's adequate.
They wanted storm drains, we can add storm drains that he wanted.
Okay. And what about, would there be any type of crown on the common or private driveways?
We could add a crown, but I'm not sure that's necessary if you've got a cross pitch. If you've got a 2% cross pitch, it seems like that eliminates the point of having a crown.
By 2% cross pitch, you mean from the right to left or left to right?
Well, going down, in the downhill, whatever.
Right. And he also feels that the four-foot shoulders of mulch for the private driveway or stone for the common, he doesn't think would be sufficient.
There's only one section of the driveway that's, that could be a problem. And that's that first section where all the, all four of them come together.
Okay. And so, would you be willing to do something different to accommodate this opinion here by Mr. Langone?
Yes.
And what would that be?
I would caution against... I would caution against agreeing to something without having it reviewed because none of us are engineers.
Right, right.
So, I know where your line of questioning is going.
Yeah, but, yeah. I mean, I'm not saying that we would agree with it, but...
But before he goes and starts redesigning stuff, we're not gonna be able to look at it and say whether it works or not. So, the jump where I'm sure we're gonna, where I'm assuming we're gonna end up is we're gonna need a third-party review on it. So, I don't know if you agree with this, Mr. Joyce, but my thought would be if we're having a third-party review on stormwater, that we do that before you start redesigning. I'm assuming that's gonna save you money. Okay. You know what I mean? Because if you start throwing in catch basins and changing the pitch, and then we look at it and go, oh, we don't really know what we're looking at, so let's put this out now.
Yeah. Okay.
And my thought is that it's gonna cut out a step.
Okay.
Versus you coming back and then us not being technically competent to assess whether it's sufficient or not. I share the same, I share the same concerns with the drives because of the length of them and the change of pitch and the fact that four of them are coming together. I mean, I'm not, I'm not an engineer and I'm not...
Sure it had to be.
So, I'm always gonna default to, I think we're getting to something that requires a special permit and the planning board has the option to request engineered plans that we're gonna ask for a third-party review and see what our consultant says should be done.
Okay.
Before we approve anything. That's my thought on the stormwater issues.
No, that, no, no.
But I know where your line of questioning is going.
Yeah, I didn't know how much information you wanted from him.
Do you say have them review it as it is?
I would say have them review it as it is and tell us, tell us. You know, because it's one thing to have the highway super look at it and say, I think you need this, I think you need that. But he's not given specifics, whereas a third-party review will say...
Make it technical and...
Right.
And he recommends a third-party review.
Right. There should be a storm scepter here and...
Yeah, I agree.
That's the extent of it.
Yeah.
That's the extent of my knowledge.
Okay, so then if we move away from that section and we go to the building inspector, he also has concerns about the water.
The driveway maintenance agreement is laid out from the bylaws, so...
Yeah, right, that's required, so that's not an issue. I don't, yeah, I don't see, I understand the concern, but I think the bylaw addresses it by...
Yeah, it has to be recorded.
When the owner, when they sell the property...
The common driveway needs to be recorded, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Hampden County Registry of Deeds, such right-of-way.
And common driveway shall have no time either responsibility or liability to the town. Each landowner shall be liable or responsible or responsible for the repair, maintenance of any portion of the common driveway to which they have exclusive right. And I think it's... Excuse me? Oh, from, yeah, oh, yes. Oh, that'd be helpful, okay. And also the letter from the different departments.
No, I don't, no.
Yes.
No. Because the owner, when they're selling the property, has the responsibility to comply with the bylaws.
It's gonna be in the registry.
Yeah, okay.
So, I'm, I'm okay with that concern. The bylaws, right?
Then we get to the habits.
Out of curiosity... No, I'm, I'm good. Okay, okay.
Well, now we're down to the headlights.
Yeah, I'm, okay, so where is 107?
Would be across the street. Must be.
Is it in or showing the houses next to it? Yeah, it showed the, oh, across the street, I don't know.
Across the street, no.
No, I don't think it did.
Nope.
Actually, the house across the street is, is gone down a bit of a ravine, is probably 15 feet below the road.
Did you find it on your map there?
Yeah, but I'm not sure where the, I'm not sure what you're saying.
Yeah, you can't tell, right?
I can't tell where the driveway is gonna come out. Right here. It's on its point, but then after I checked it, maybe this is a, this is a drive-by for the next payment.
Yeah. We have to look at it. Can you say that the property directly across from the driveway is in a ravine about 15 feet lower than street level?
Yes, it's below, yes, it dips down. And again, I'm not even sure headlights should be something that's, there's nothing in the regulations. And I've done subdivisions. If there was a house, if this is a 20-lot subdivision and the street was coming out right to that house, that's never, it's never ever come up in any subdivisions I've done. Now we've got four houses instead of 20 houses.
You're also looking at a special permit versus a subdivision under the subdivision rules of right. So the special permit is gonna give the town a little more latitude on nuances of approval. But I mean, if it's, if it's depressed, the lights aren't shining on the house, though.
Well, it's not depressed that much. That, I imagine, I don't know where the house sits in relation to where the driveway is.
Yeah, that's what I'm...
I'm not saying that the lights wouldn't shine on the house, I'm just saying the house is down and dipped off down after.
Yep. I'm not saying I agree with the concern. I haven't looked at it, so I don't know if I, yeah, I don't know if I agree with the concern or not.
Well, I guess that's something that'd have to be resolved, because if I'm gonna send this for a peer review, I don't wanna have that done and then they have to say, oh, we don't like headlights shining on houses.
In other words, you don't want that to be the one stick in the mud.
I don't wanna redesign it and then say, okay, now redesign it again.
Okay.
I know what you're saying.
Okay. And then... What you're saying, Jason, is that before he redesigns his plans, because it has a peer review, before he does the peer review, we should do a site visit?
I haven't said that yet, but I'm thinking that.
And if he does a peer, or if we do a peer review, we get that document back and we review it without it being that way he doesn't have to keep coming back, that we have a...
So what, how about if we did this? How about if we assumed that it would shine on the house? At this meeting? Would that be a reason to deny the special permit?
I'm not sure I'm there.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the argument written here by the building inspector is that it's four times the light disruption. As opposed to one time, because we all have light coming from all sorts of sources onto our property, right? I think I'm with you, I'm not sure that that would be a viable reason to deny it. Based on, based on the bylaws, and he's in, and the building inspector cites Section DA, other standards may be set on site configurations. That's, you know, that's a huge loophole that you could throw anything into, but I'm not sure that this, that argument qualifies for that.
He's in, he's in, not under driveways.
Is there a reason we picked that spot?
He must be under, he's under special permits, where?
That's, that's where the grade works, the best. We wanted to keep the entire grade under, at a maximum of 15%. We can go higher than 15, but we didn't wanna go above 15. And we even put that little, there's a little curve in the very beginning, that even that helped to keep the grade down. We picked the, we picked the area of the lot that had the shallowest entry from the road. And we also picked the area, there's an existing culvert right there. So, there's, there's, that's already being used as the driveway, as when people's going in and out. So we figured it's got an existing culvert, that's the best place for it.
And it, it hits the street at 81 degrees as opposed to 90?
Yes.
You read that?
There's special permits. Well, it's 130, but there's, this is section.
I, I honestly think it's, I know it's a delay, but I actually think it's best if we go out and take a look at it before we, before we send it out for a third-party review. Because I'm not sure I, not sure I agree with the concern of lights. I mean, there's some curvature to the driveway that's gonna wash the light both ways and not necessarily come straight out. Cars are driving out. Is there, what's the limited clearing look like along the road? It's, it's, it's right where, where you drive in and out, right there, is probably about 18 feet wide.
Right, and so the remaining aerial, is that gonna remain a vegetated buffer?
Oh, we're not gonna cut down anything, we don't have to. Yeah, there's, along, along the entire road, the trees will remain except for the driveway.
And I'm asking that because of the slight curvature out there. You know, if all you've got cleared, driveway is that driveway.
Actually, if, once you come in, there's a bigger clearing area, this, because they did tree removals on this site, so they were using that as a staging area. So it's kinda narrow when you first drive in off Thresher, but then it gets, it gets wider.
Yeah, no, what I'm thinking is if there's a, if there's a vegetated buffer, it's gonna...
Along the road.
Along the road, diffuse the light as you're coming down the driveway.
There is, there is a vegetated buffer, you know what I mean? And if you've got a, you've got a slight radius at the end there, it's gonna be a pretty limited window of light. It's not like you're coming 500 feet straight, straight out.
Yeah, I'm not even sure, sure where I fall on that until I look at it. I apologize for the uncertainty.
We could look at it relatively quickly.
Yeah, I mean, I could, yeah.
But then, but then we'd have to come back for another, or we're gonna have to come back again anyway after this, after the peer review, right? But we shouldn't send them for a peer review until we feel comfortable that the light's not an issue.
Right.
It's right there. Or send, maybe after recess, I was gonna say send two of us. Whatever, it's not a quorum. Can anybody find 7.543DA?
7.54...
It's not the right number, right? Because I can't, it's not under driveways, it's gotta be under special permit somewhere. And it's not the right section, for sure.
543, you're looking for 543DA, that might just...
Yeah.
3D, there's just a 543D.
And that's not it.
And that's not it, yeah, no.
That's driveways too, I think this is under special permit.
No, it's, no, it's, it's, so it's 7, no, it's 7.542C9.
What page?
74.
Oh, so it is under.
Yeah, but it's, but it's misquoted here, it's miscited.
Gotcha.
And it's Frosty. But you know what, that's under the Frost one as well.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I'm saying, it's not a...
Yeah, it's under Frost, so it doesn't matter, right, yeah. So it's not even an appropriate site for that.
Traffic study? I don't think the light is an issue, personally.
I don't see that, I don't think you can... And it's one common entrance, and if there's a vegetative buffer, which you could actually probably see on Google Maps.
I mean, the vegetative buffer, we can always put in a special permit, you know?
It's maintained.
Right.
Yeah.
Not, not cut down, not, except for where the driveway is down.
Right.
So I think this is the opening right here. So the opening's there already, right?
Yes.
Google, who's Google Earth?
I don't know.
It's densely vegetated. Densely.
The whole, the whole parcel is densely vegetated. In fact, it's hard to walk the parcel.
This is the, this is the current driveway that's there, which is stone, right?
It's just, uh, there is some stone on it.
This is the road surrounding it.
No, I can see, I can see, and I've actually, I'm right around the corner.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's, it's kind of dense. I think it's, I don't have an issue with the lights. So that just leaves.
There was a small house right on the road.
Yeah, I'm not seeing any houses along the street at all.
I definitely see one across the street from the, this gravel opening.
The street view?
Yeah, I'm up here.
Here it is. And that's the road.
Oh, yeah, there you go. That's it, right there.
Why isn't it showing?
When he does what you're doing. Anyway, so there is, there is a house, right?
It's down a little bit, but.
The light's one.
Yeah. Just like.
At least, at least the second floor. I find it's. Isn't the point, guys, that even if the lights do shine on it, would we say, would we deny the permit based on that single fact?
No, I don't think we, I personally wouldn't, but I might consider additional curvature to the driveway.
Okay, that's where you're going, an additional curve. But then with the additional curvature to the driveway, that brings us to the fire truck and all that sort of stuff.
It's actually in the regs. They want the driveway to head pretty much perpendicular to the road. For the, well, yeah, and that's what we've got for the first 30 feet.
Oh, so that's only 30 feet that you've got?
Yes.
Yeah.
Still annoyed that their phone's not there. Putting me in the right spot.
All right, so what do you think?
I'm, I'm ready to move on to the light issue. I have no problem. I think Jason's ready, except that he can't find the house on the map.
You can figure it out tonight.
I think I'm ready to move on.
Laying a wake-up midnight.
I think the condition was to maintain as much buffer as.
Yeah.
Yeah, with the condition of.
Well, we're not going to cut down any trees beyond there. We don't cut, no, people think builders like to cut down trees. It costs us money to cut down trees.
Right.
And then it's an area that needs to be maintained. Yeah, I think if it, it just left natural, it'll just all fill in and that's, it's all going to be left natural. We're not, we don't want to plant bushes or anything in that way. If you look at, when you drive by, it's solid woods.
Yeah, I would say that the vegetative buffer remains unchanged. Okay, so what's next here? The fire emergency services.
On the fire, they want a 50-foot radius and we did provide the 50-foot radius.
Right, and then the fire chief has some concerns, however. So access, one access to four homes, one lane vehicle traffic, make an emergency call difficult to manage. The amount of area needed for fire apparatus would block egress or access for the other dwellings in the event of an emergency.
So I guess what he's saying here is that in order to get enough apparatus in here, you might, it might be lined up along one of these common drives, blocking the egress to the most distant homes.
I mean.
Of each common, portion of the common drive, right?
Wouldn't they go to the separate driveway of the, the only one that seems short enough that might not fit all fire apparatuses lot B? Everything else seems long enough where all of the vehicles would be on that specific person's driveway, in my opinion. And I'm also not a firefighter, so.
Right, but.
My opinion is with a grain of salt.
What's the width of the common driveway?
14.
The common driveway is 14 feet.
And the personal driveways are 12.
Even on, on lot B, I've got a scale here.
Yeah, how long is that driveway?
Once it leaves the common, yeah.
150 feet.
So what's the length of a?
That's as long as most driveways.
Yes. Yeah, I, and I mean, if, if there's an emergency elsewhere where they would have, like, say, the vegetative buffer is on fire, nobody should be going past there to get to their house anyway. I don't, yeah, I mean.
Would, would we want to speak to the fire chief though, to see what specifically?
I think, I think we should ask for a suggestion on mitigation from the fire chief, because he's saying he doesn't agree with one access to four homes, one lane vehicle traffic will make emergency call difficult to manage, but that's what the bylaws allow.
Right, he's not specific enough.
Right, and he might not have real, the fire chief might not have realized that first section of driveway that's for all four houses, that's 18 feet wide.
That's 18.
So that's wide enough, that's wide enough for two fire trucks side by side.
Right, but I don't, I don't think his point is for the fire trucks to get in, it's for people to get out once the fire trucks are lined up. Inside on a common drive.
Right, but he is saying it's 18 feet wide, which is wide enough for two fire trucks. So I don't think two fire trucks would line up next to each other. I think they'd line up behind.
No, no.
And that would leave space for another person.
Right, but, but once you, once you leave that first portion of the, of the common drive, the other two common drives that are common for two houses each are 14 feet.
Right, those are 14 feet and they've got a four-foot flat area on each side. So you've got eight feet of flat area plus 14, so you've got 22 feet in width that could be driven on.
Okay, and that flat area is, is composed of what?
That's mulch. That's for drainage control.
Yeah, okay.
But you could drive over it.
Yeah, you can drive over it. And I don't know whether, I've seen other common driveways, this is how they approve them. This is kinda, in a lot of the towns, a lot of the common driveways, and they were the same regulations.
I would just ask you. I don't know that we need. I think, okay, so he said, he provided comments. He didn't say, I don't agree with it.
Yeah.
And I think that we just, I'll just kind of explain.
If we're within the bylaw, there's 22 feet of drivable space.
The problem is the fire chief, the fire chief uses language. It will make emergency call difficult to manage, not it can make, it will make. It would block egress access for other dwellings in the event of an emergency.
How much did he look at?
I, I don't know how much, so that's why we should talk to him.
I do think, I agree with Heather, we need to get clarification.
Yeah, it's too big. It's too big.
So I don't think that he has been, I don't think that he would be the plan, that they have to save.
Well, and if that, if that's the case, then that's great. Then we could, then we'd feel comfortable saying, okay.
We're not gonna, so what if we talk to him, okay, so what if we get a third-party review? When we talk to the fire chief, then he's gonna have to change his plans again.
The third-party review's gonna take weeks.
Yeah.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want it, because that's if they, because they're gonna look, if you, if, I don't know, this is same regulations, this meets all the regulations, I don't know. If the regulations required a wider driveway, you wouldn't.
But it should.
Then it should say so in the bylaws. I agree, yeah.
And this is other common driveways, it's just for two houses.
And I'm not sure Ed necessarily put as much thought into the way he worded it that year, but he, he probably was just.
I just think somebody should speak to me, if for no other reason to educate him when he writes something like this to look at the plans.
Honestly, I don't, I agree with talking to Ed.
Yeah.
Finding out what, you know, maybe, we're all busy, maybe he didn't look into it in depth enough, and maybe if you explain to him what's going on, he's like, well, that's not a concern anymore, right?
Yeah, because he doesn't necessarily know that this meets the regulations of the bylaw.
Right, he's not comparing it to the bylaw. He's just looking at the plans and saying, how hard is it going to be for me to get guys who put it up there?
I mean, it looks to us like it complies with the bylaw, but we have this opinion here that needs clarification.
Right, so our job is to compare it to the bylaw. His job is to state what he thinks.
What he knows for his, what he needs to do, yeah.
John Flynn has a question.
But can I make a quick comment?
Yeah.
So I was on the board when we wrote this common driveway bylaw, and Mike Gorski was the chief at that point. He made the point about, you know, there's going to be concern during fire service on a common driveway. Al is correct. You know, we went to the, to the width of it, knowing there would be traffic on the road in case of a fire. This is going to be his standard comment going forward for any type of application like this. He reviewed it. This is just something they're always going to say, just like Jason said, or I think he said, he didn't say against, he said, just be aware, we would have a concern. You know, he's not speaking against or whatever, just be aware of it, and.
This is my opinion.
He doesn't necessarily, yeah, he may not agree.
Right, so.
Because it makes their, them performing their duties more difficult, so he may not agree with the bylaw. It doesn't mean we can reject it because of that. So I think it's easy enough to make a call tomorrow, the next day, and get clarification. If I know there's something specific, he would want that, because if it's just that he doesn't agree with the bylaw, we can't, you know, it may be, it's like John said, it may be his standard comment. I don't think there's any harm in discussing verifying that there isn't something that potentially be left out that we should consider. And I think we can get that done long before we even get this to be reviewed.
But if there is something he's concerned about, this meets the bylaw, can we even really ask him to do anything differently? There is a special permit, so I guess, yeah. But you know what I mean? He meets the bylaw.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just kind of courtesy in a way, just to check with the guy. I'm, I'm, that's fine, given the law.
I honestly think he's had a part, and he didn't have a chance to really look at these plans, because he's had it for a month. And it was, he's gonna try to make it, now he can't make it, and he gave me a comment at the last minute. So if I had a guess, he didn't get a chance to.
Yeah, and he was probably just, you know, cover his bases and say, it's a common driveway, so.
Not with the plans, knowing that the driveway is.
It's a fire. Do you know the driveway's going to be running?
Wouldn't want a three-story building, yeah. And then the last thing that he mentions is during a weather vent, who's responsible for all four dwellings and main access driveway? I assume he's.
Each landowner served by the common driveway, so they're jointly and separately responsible and liable for the repair and maintenance of all portions of the driveway.
Right, so that, we've taken care of that. We've taken care of that.
No issues from police chief on board, huh?
Natural heritage one, it's not having copies on that. She read that, so they have to do a conservation.
Which it sounds like you've already.
Yes, we've, we've, we've been in contact with natural heritage.
Is that what Ted was bringing up?
Did they issue, did they issue approval letter, or what do they do?
They, they issued, yes, they do.
Have you seen that?
Yes, because this was, you may, you may recall, and not everyone here is the same people, but this is the same parcel that was approved for a solar farm. And when it was approved for the solar farm, we went through that with natural heritage, and they okayed to develop the entire parcel for a solar farm.
So could you provide that to Concom, or do they already have it, or?
I, they, they have it, but I can send it again.
Yeah, we can send it along with this one, so they have it for their.
Because they sent it, and then we built on lots, we built two houses already on this parcel, on lots A and lots, oh, no, I'm backwards.
One and two?
We built two houses already. They, they didn't show the houses on the plan, but we, we built two houses, if you're looking to, to the right side. And each of those houses was on the same letter from natural heritage allowing for the construction.
I mean, if you can send that to Concom, I don't, I'm not, I'm not super familiar with what they need. I don't know if they need it specifically for this project or other parcel of plan, but I'm sure that they can, uh, straighten that out. Ted have another?
He did, but I don't think he was on anymore when she last pulled up the, um, oh, yeah, he's there.
Ted, are you still on?
I'm still here.
Anything else besides the, uh, natural heritage?
I don't know if there's a change from when it was going to be a solar site to a housing development. I would assume we would appreciate him at least making a contact with us so we can review it.
I, I have a.
And see if, and see if there's a need for, for us to talk to him or not.
So he's gonna, he's gonna forward the note, you want him to forward the note-take letter?
Forward the note of, from N H E S P and inquire of our, our clerk if she can check with the, with the chair to see if there's a reason to talk to you or not, or if her satisfied with, with how it's going. Because it was going to be a solar site, and now it's going to be houses, if I understand correctly. Right, so there could be a different request, I don't know. But a courtesy call to the office would be appreciated.
Right, so. You guys want? Chief to weigh in? Want who to weigh in? Oh, yeah.
We're gonna ask for the third-party review language.
If the fire chief come back, comes back and says something, I would alter the plan that I want.
Wait, so it's stop the third-party review. Right? Because it's not like they're gonna start tomorrow on the third-party review. It's gonna be.
Are we good, please, to, before we get to?
So we, we got time, and if we, if Ed has something significant on it, then we just don't push that through, and you know what I mean? We'll laugh on that.
Now, it also says on page 72 that both the highway superintendent, building inspector, and fire chief for a driveway permit application. We have to see that application? It says before construction is made. We have to see that application, it says before construction is made.
That's usually, yeah, curb cut, yeah, okay, that's usually done.
We don't have to see that, we assume that that's where it happened, okay.
There's already a curb, it's already there.
They'll still make me apply for a curb cut, even though there is one there, this is gonna point out. I've learned that the hard way.
It's basically just to make sure that he pays the paper first, however many feet you gotta have paid. But yeah, it's basically just a, just check to make sure that.
Alright, so.
So I'll, I'll reach out and see if he's got anything specific, or if this is a general comment.
Okay.
Any issues, should we, yeah. Trust him before we start the third party review, or else, and just before we start the third party review, or we figure out the approach at that, but I have a feeling that.
It's comments, or?
Yeah, I have a feeling that's comments, or just a dissatisfaction.
Right. Any public comment? Question?
Just wondering if I could see the, my animals.
Could you just stand and tell us your name and address?
That's about exactly, yeah, nine, the driveway's almost exactly across from one or seven.
It's actually, almost easier to look at here, cause it's right there, and then it goes off like that, and then like this.
The couple front back is this, is it four hundred feet?
And that's two fifty, and that's.
No, no, that's. Well, so right here is two fifty, so.
So from the street. Four, five, four hundred and eighty feet ish. Three seventy-ish. Two inch. And. One fifty-ish, does that sound right?
Yes.
Yeah, there's more pages here.
They're just enlarged showing the topography of each of the, each of the drives.
So I guess we'll look for a motion to continue the public hearing until we've got third party reviews.
I move, we continue the public hearing. For twenty twenty-three B, pending the third party review.
Date to be returned.
Date to be returned.
I appreciate everyone's.
The only thing with that is if we don't give a date of when we're having it, we have to, this is the legal process of, so I think we should come up with that.
Does come up with a date?
Yep, otherwise I gotta publish it all again if it's not announced here.
Do you wanna do September, or is that too far out?
We have two functions, and we're on June six.
Right.
Also, how long?
That's, I gotta get a contractor, remove the PDM files, I'm probably gonna take two weeks, give me a quote, I don't know, I'd say two, two weeks, three weeks.
So why don't we say August ninth?
First case comes week, come in, open it, and extend it again.
That's a good plan.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm agreeing to continue the public hearing until August nine.
I have second option.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thanks.